I just didn't mean bother with it because it's a delay.
Oh. I try my office to those should be.
Okay, first of all, we'll have our city clerk Kathy call roll call.
All right, Mayor McGowan.
Here.
Matthew Lund.
Present.
John Glondo.
Here.
Ruston Weaver.
Present.
Stephen Harper.
Present.
Miki Holtz.
Here.
Beth Williams.
Here.
And Ken Ratliff.
I'm here.
That's great. Okay.
That's not me.
Alrighty, so how about approval of the meeting agenda?
I move that we approve the meeting agenda.
I'm the second bet.
Moved by Matthew Lund and seconded by Beth Williams to approve the meeting agenda. Questions on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor with aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the meeting agenda is approved. Have nothing under announcements, appointments, awards, and recognition. And we're down to the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Move to adopt the consent agenda.
I will. Okay.
Okay, I okay, I'm gonna give John made the motion to accept the consent agenda and Beth Williams seconded. Questions on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor with aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed, the consent agenda is approved. Okay, officer reports, we're gonna go down to our city administrator, Rob Omen.
Okay, hey, thank you, Honorable Mayor, City Council. So I told you about the legislative day last time and the mayor did an excellent job. He, we, we, we heard a lot of the cities and and let me tell you, Jay did a good job in relaying our number one priority, which was, of course, the the main street. So we'll see how that goes. As far as the building department goes, for the month of November, issued 13 permits, which is a little bit higher than normal, issued 13 permits. So far today, we have 96 and we're about little almost to 100,000 in permit fees, not quite there. So hopefully by year end, I'll, I'll, I'll hit the six-figure number. Also, the building department will have, I know I've been saying this a few, a few times, February 1st is when the the new code will finally come into effect. There's been two delays so far and I finally got another just emailed today, in fact, or maybe it's Friday, that they're finally decided that February 1st will be the date. And so now I'm gonna be bringing the ordinance to you to actually update our building code to reflect the new codes. So that, that is to come. In the IIT world, there we're getting most everybody except, except for maybe one person now is, is converted over to our, our new system and now we're about ready to upgrade next, I think next weekend, we're gonna upgrade the server itself. Right now, we're still under the old server and, and it's still hanging on, but if you've been in City Hall at all, you hear chirping up there. Well, it's been chirping for quite a few weeks now, so but it's, it's, it's gonna get updated this coming weekend as long as all of the parts get here. With that, I'll just answer any questions if there is any.
Okay, thank you for that, Rob. Now we'll go to our city planner, Lucy Temple.
Hello, thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Council. I did send forward a staff report in your packets that has a couple of graphics because year end, I wanted to share with you just a little bit of what I've been up to and also what I can track. If anyone had any questions in, you know, moving forward of what the planning department's doing, I can, I can provide other graphics or other tracking information. So the first page shows the 2020 Planning Department focus areas and I track my time by the hour of what I'm doing. So I have a lot of different work areas. And this is the primary work areas that are shown on this first pie chart. I took off, I took off probably as many as you're seeing here that had low levels of involvement or sporadic. So you can see that about 30% of my time is spent on permitting, but there's a lot of other things that I focus on throughout the year. And then below that, there's two different graphs. One is just permitting, just to show where the permitting is kind of ebbing and flowing throughout the year. And you can see that it, we didn't really have much going on January, February of 2020, and then it went up and stayed up and it's still up. So I'm interested to see what 2021 looks like for permitting. And then just isolating my work or the, you know, city staff planning for the larger projects that Greg Dorn and others are really taking the lead on, but just to kind of give a perspective of what I provide on that, I broke down my hours for Bullfrog Flats or 47 Degrees North and City Heights on another graph. And then on the second page, I wanted to report the 2020 planning or planning related or design related grants. So there are also other components to these grants, but these are ones that I had some involvement with. And I did realize that I forgot one grant, which would add another $11,200, which was a Shoreline Master Program grant from the Department of Ecology to upgrade our code. So just to read the highlights here, in 2020, we've used all or part of $3.3 million in grants that we've secured either this year or in past years. So one example would be we, the HLA finished the design of Phase 3 for the downtown revitalization project. Those grants were not received in 2020, but they were used in 2020 for the most part. And you can see some of the smaller grants in there. And then we submitted about $2.3 million in grants this year from parks to like the gazebo project to holiday lighting to two big capital infrastructure projects that we're waiting to hear from wash dot on will hear next year. So we were unsuccessful in less than half of those. We still have about two mil or $1.2 million in grants that we're waiting notification on in 2021. So we're sitting really good for grants, but I have to give kudos to Robin, who manages all of them because it is quite the feat to keep track of all the bits and pieces of these grants. And the reason why the Shoreline Master Program isn't on there is because I've been managing that one. So it wasn't on Robin's spreadsheet, which I used to develop this list. So if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Hey, don't hear anything. So thank you for that.
I do have one question. Sorry.
Oh, let's see. How did I miss you? Okay, go ahead.
I just realized the horse park covered arena $500,000 grant that says unsuccessful. Was that the one we discussed in the city council meeting about what six weeks ago or so?
Uh, I'm not entirely sure if it, it doesn't seem like it was that recent. This was the state Recreation Conservation Office grant that Leslie Thurston and I worked on together for quite a long time. It requires pre-COVID, it required two trips to Olympia. In this case, it required two Zoom meetings with Olympia plus many other steps. That one was unsuccessful. We ranked pretty low on that, but they were successful. The horse park, you know, they do their, a lot of their grants go through the city as city grants. And so we helped facilitate that. They were successful in a $50,000 county lodging tax grant.
Okay.
You know, we'll keep working on the rest.
Yeah, okay. Thanks.
Thanks, Beth.
Okay, thank you, Lucy and Beth for that. Next, we'll go to our Public Works Director, Mike Engelhardt.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, council members. I'll try to be as quick as possible. And then we got a big loaded sheet in front of us. So if you haven't had the opportunity to experience all the lighting down First Street from the Phase 2 project, we finally worked with contractors and figured out what the issue was with the outlets. So all the lights or trees are lit now. It looks beautiful there on First Street. Got those taken care of. The staff and I, we did our annual kickoff for next year of our safety meeting and kind of a where we were, how the year went and our expectations for next year and what we're gonna be doing and working on. One of those included our GIS. We did some training with the company and we now have a couple of GPS pingers that plug into our smartphones where I can have staff members go out to the water meters, to the valve cans, to hydrants and everything, and actually GPS coordinate exactly within a foot of where all those attributes are to where in the event. Again, like we discussed after Bubba Simplot left, this is just a great tool that we have in our toolbox now to be able to find all these attributes in the future, should we ever need to. We can very easily say that we need to go to Jay McGowan's water meter and just type in Jay McGowan's. It'll pop up with his address, his meter ID number, everything, and it will GPS ping it within a foot. So that's gonna be a huge handy tool for us. We did fill that open position. Jimmy Studer Baker was the candidate that was selected. He actually started last Thursday. He comes to us with a wealth of, you know, experience in public works. He was formerly with the City of Roslyn. One thing we have noticed is we have a lot of fire hydrants that are starting to leak and weep and not drain. So with that, we've kind of made the decision as a group, we're gonna go ahead and purchase four fire hydrants and go out and pick our oldest ones and replace them and then take those ones to the shop and rebuild them. Then we'll have four that are rebuilt that we'll take out, do the same thing, swap them and start a rotation program to where we make sure that all of our hydrants are up to new standards and are functioning like they're supposed to be so that we have the proper fire protection we need in the case of an unfortunate incident. The crew's still working on getting the alleys resurfaced. Obviously, with the weather, we kind of need to be kind of careful on when we do it so that we're not wasting material. They've been out continuing to jet some of our problem sewer areas and we're working back on cammering some of those and getting them documented so we can find out where our RNI problems are. And I want to take my hat off to my team. The City of Kititas called last Saturday and reported that they had a water main break and our on-call guy, Matt McKenzie, jumped in the jetter truck and raced down here with Suck Suck and helped them fix that water leak. And then low and behold, on Tuesday night, of course, at 3:30, right before the guys get ready to go home, the phone rang again and they requested more manpower and also our excavator as well as our sewer jetter truck or back truck. And so the three of us raced down to Kititas and helped them out and they did an amazing job. No, it was went off without a hitch. It was great that we could start doing that interlocal help with everyone. So appreciate you guys supporting our team throughout the year and we look forward to next year. That's all I got.
Okay, thank you, Mike, for that. You guys are doing a good job for sure. So now we'll hear from our police chief, Kirk. Man?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, Council. I'll keep this short. The biggest news we've had is our new guy that is in the academy, Officer Alec Johnson. They've been struggling with the whole COVID thing. So the academy has been doing a lot of things online. He's doing well and he reported to me that so far, the graduation date is still set for February 17th. So they're still on target to graduate on time if nothing else happens in the COVID world to change that. It's been challenging. He's been doing a lot of classes online, both at home and at the police department. And he most recently just went through EVOC, which was the Washington State Patrol's Academy. It's their driving course. So he was able to do that. They opened it up for the, for his class to do that. So at least that's done and out of the way for him. And so again, we're hoping to have him back with us by February 17th. As Rob talked about earlier, our departments, one of the departments that got moved over to the new server and the new phone system that, that we purchased earlier this year. You'll see later today, I'm gonna be surplusing some old IT equipment because it's been replaced. But our phone system that we had in there from 2002, we got our money's worth. It seems weird to say it's 19 years old when it was only 2002, but we did get 19 years out of that old system. So I think we got our money's worth and thankful for the new system. It's up and running and doing well. And that's it unless you guys have any questions.
Does it look like there's any questions for you, Kirk? Thank you for that.
Okay.
And then our fire chief, Ed Mills, are you there? Let's see.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Council. Real quick report, the month of November, we had 49 calls. We had one fire call, which was a mutual response for Fire District 7 that had a structure fire. We had five false alarms, which we still respond to and two good intent and 38 EMS calls. Other than that, I'm here to answer any of your questions.
Ed, I'm not sure. I don't exactly see you on here, but do you have a report on your new office?
Uh, yeah, we usually report that the first of January, but this year we've, we've already done the vote there. Your incoming officers will remain the same as the year 2020. So no changes this coming year pending approval of council mayor. So like I said, we usually do that in January, but it will stay the same.
Yes, I thought it was notable and I thought it was good for you to mention that nonetheless.
Thank you.
Okay, that's it for the fire chief. Now we'll hear from William.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, member of the council. As usual, you should find my graphs in your council packets. In a nutshell, the cooler weather has really slowed down things at the water treatment plant as well as down at the wastewater plant. At the wastewater plant, we brought our second SBR reactor unit online. It is now fully seated and in operation. Staff at the wastewater plant rebuilt the UV chamber number two in anticipation of our higher flows coming for the winter. Staff was also drained clean and inspected the grit chambers, pump and grit classifiers. No issues found on, on any of that portion of it. And they completed all the oil changes on the headwork screens, the motive pumps and all of the influent effluent pump systems have been tested and we're ready for the winter flows. Up at the water treatment plant, the variable frequency drive for the recycle pump that had failed has been replaced and that system is now back online. Every October, to prevent freezing or broken pipes down at the intake, we switched from the water wash system to the air wash system. And this year, we've gone out and pulled the water wash system apart and are in the process of rebuilding that system. We're currently working with Connolly Engineering to fix telemetry communications issue with Zone 1 East Reservoir. Hopefully we'll have that completed and online this Wednesday. And we are also monitoring the water temperatures up at the water plants. And we're gonna be start switching back and forth here for the warmer water from the well field as our finished water continues to drop. Right now, we're running about four degrees Celsius. In Fahrenheit, that's about 39 degrees. That's all I have. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you folks may have.
William, it's Ken. Hey, thanks for being on top of the temperature situation. That's great to hear.
You're welcome. We, we learned that lesson in 2016 and we're carrying that forward.
Great.
Thank you, William, for that.
You're welcome.
We're now finished with the officer reports. So next on our agenda is citizen comments. And so I'll try and go through the names that I see here on the screen and ask if there is something you wish to address the council on. The first one I see, Melissa Becker, do you wish to address the council? I see you're muted.
Sorry, I just unmuted. I'm just waiting to hear about the updates on the community center. Thank you.
Okay. Kathy Swanson, I know who you are. That's all right. Our Commissioner Laura Shodish, do you wish to address the council?
No, thank you. Just here to listen.
All right, thank you for that. Gary, I know I see you on there, but do you wish to address the council, Gary?
No, later on, we will discuss an ordinance.
All right, okay, all right. I just saw your face pop up, pop, pop up and I thought, oh, okay, there's Alexandra phone, whoever that may be. Do you wish to address?
Just your trusty city attorney, Mayor.
Oh, yes. Wow, that's pretty good of me, hasn't it? Next, we'll have Linda Cully.
Thank you. Just here to listen this evening.
Okay, thank you. And then Roger, I see you're on the call. This is Roger Beck.
I, I, yes, but I have nothing to add that isn't on the agenda.
Okay, thank you for that, Roger. Claire Nichols, do you wish to address the council?
Just here for the community center agenda item, but I did want to mention that the downtown lights look gorgeous and they make me smile every time I drive by. Thank you.
Okay, now see, that's, that's a citizen comment, a non-agenda item. Thank you for that. And then, of course, there's John Heine. What do you got for us, John?
I'm just an active listener tonight, waiting for the community center update, but thank you.
Okay, and Amy McGuffin, I see you're on the meeting tonight.
I'm also here listening and waiting for a later business.
Okay. And now I don't know, Rob, if you know, notice if there's anybody else on somewhere other than on the screen.
Yeah, no, I've, I've been checking and going down through the list as you go through there and I see nobody else.
Okay. All right, hearing no, none, none others on that wish to make citizen comments, I will proceed from there. So under public appearances, we, AC Stewart was going to report to us about the cleanup project that they did about a month ago, but he's, he's under the weather and will not be able to give his report tonight, but it will be forthcoming. Okay, now business requiring public hearings. We, I will first will have Lucy Temple give us an introduction to the 2021 fee schedule. We'll open it to public comment and then the council can just make their deliberations. So Lucy, you want to go for it?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The packet I've shared to the screens, if everyone can see the screen, this packet is encompassing two other agenda items because they all come together. So this is the entire package for the ordinance 1600 and a resolution to adopt the 2021 fee schedule. Staff, city staff have all reviewed this and this was instigated because of another later agenda item, which is proposed short-term rental code, which needed a permit fee and a business license fee. And so while we were at it, staff decided to be efficient and update staff time and equipment rentals to the 2021 rates. So what you'll see in your packet is really what the public might be interested in is the resolution. But the very first thing that we'll talk about after the hearing will be a repealing ordinance to repeal something that was a part of this, the 2020 fee schedule. So the hearing is based on the resolution, which is the part that actually has the fees in it. And a summary of that is that Exhibit A shows the rates and fees and it adds a short-term rental permit fee and a short-term rental license fee and it reorganizes the permits to the correct alphabetic, alphabetized, alphabetization. Sorry, tongue twister. And then Exhibit B is the staff time and rates, which updates everything to 2021. It added our consultants and legal and, and those equipment rental rates for public works. So I'm just gonna show everyone what this whole package is real quick and then we can get to the next spot. So the ordinance is to repeal a part of the fee schedule that was taken out in 2020 and adopted by ordinance. You'll recall in 2019, we passed about 30 ordinances so that we could, in the future, only use a resolution to change the fee schedule rates. But there was a little bit of confusion last year. And so this is to repeal the staff time rates from 2020 and put it back where it belongs, which is under the, the resolution. So in your packet, you'll see the the one with the notes here that this 2020 staff time is being repealed. So to the resolution, it's very simple. And the red lines are just mostly putting them in the right alphabetical order and then the highlighted, the two highlighted, and I'm sorry for getting dizzy, there's two highlighted, where are the only fees that were added? No other fees were changed. So that's that short-term rental permit fee. And then down below under business licensing, licensing, short-term rental business license. Again, no other fees or rates changed or were added. And we'll go down to Exhibit B, which is the 2021 staff time, equipment, and equipment hourly rates and includes our consultants and legal team for the first time. And you can see that there are some footnotes basically showing that there's a 10% administrative fee that's been in our ordinance. That's nothing new. Overtime will be charged at 1.5 times the regular rate. Consultant fees may be added. Other consultants not listed here may be included per our existing municipal code. Nothing changed there. And that the equipment rate does not include staff time to operate the equipment. So we consolidated all of that into one sheet. And it's based upon the already passed 2021 budget. So that's all the material for the hearing. If anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them before we move on.
Well, I think this is what you do to introduce it to the, for the public hearing and then we will discuss it as a council after we have the hearing. Okay, so at this time, I'll open the public hearing for comments from the public and I'll have to go through that list again, Rob. I don't I don't have any way to see who might be wanting to address this, Rob, because
Okay, well, I'll, I'll look for you as well.
You know, if there is anybody who can hear me that wishes to pipe up and give us some feedback on this proposed fee schedule change, go ahead and speak up and we'll try and recognize you and listen to what you have to say. Okay. I'm hearing no comments from the public. I will close the public hearing and turn this over to the council for questions for Lucy about this fee change schedule. All right. What do you got? Anybody have any questions for Lucy about what we're trying to do here?
I have two questions generally about the fee, about two items on the fee schedule. I don't know who those are. Those best directed to you, Lucy?
Well, let's start there.
Okay, so first one is just a really small thing, but down on, hold on, down on page four of Exhibit A, we have data CD-DVD charge. I don't know if we still burn CDs or DVDs when we give records to people, but we may want to change that to like electronic media because I assume we give flash drives these days. But if somebody really wanted to get technical, if they get it on a flash drive, it's not a CD or DVD and does that fee apply? So really small thing, but first dot. And then the second one is on page one of Exhibit A, and it talks about the home occupation permit. This is something that I ran into when I was actually trying to license a business here in town recently. And if I have, I'm starting a small business that, in this case, it was a, it's a LLC that doesn't have any sort of retail footprint or anything, I was going to have to pay $250 just to have my business address at my home. And that seemed a little bit crazy to me as we're trying to, you know, people, especially in this economy, trying to start a side gig as we like to call it, a side hustle, asking someone who's just starting a business to pay $250 right up front seems pretty onerous. And I would suggest that we either modify that or in some way, I don't know the exact intent of why we had this here, but it seems expensive for a, when a one-person business at a zoned business location is $30.
Thank you. I will address both of those. The first is under, you know, our general office costs. That is something that is, it's not a planning department fee, so I did not set those fees, but I believe that Kathy or Rob could comment on that. I don't know that we have charged people for a thumb drive because it's just not something that's so common that it happens all the time or has happened. So, Rob, do you have any comment on that $10 charge? Do we need to change it or?
Right, I think I think it just brings a good point. I mean, sometimes we've seen these fees, you know, so much, we overlook it. And it's not a fee that we've, I don't think we've ever charged, so. But it's something that we could look at and maybe change at a later time. That, yeah.
I was more just interested in changing the verbiage of it, so it's a little more.
Right, the verbiage, right.
I think that having that as an option is appropriate if somebody requests significant documents that take a lot of, you know, or something, but that's all. I was just, it was more a wording thing, so that was more precise to what.
Yeah, electronic media. It does encompass everything. Yeah, good point.
Okay. So I made a note. And then the other, the home occupation permit. So this is just looking at the fees. And I think what might be maybe a good conversation to have in the future would be what is the home occupation code? What does that include? And in my interpretation of that code, that is a type one permit, which is administrative under my office. And I do not require a home occupation permit for somebody who just has a business license for, you know, if you have a business license for an online business or, I mean, people who are teleworking, who have a home office space, but they work for another company outside the city. Those do not fall under the purview of a home occupation permit. What does is something like a dog grooming business where they do the dog grooming as incidental to the residential use of their property. There's no outside signs that the business is happening except for a small sign and it's limited by trips per day to that property. So there are certain businesses that this does apply to, but certainly not, you know, doing work from home like like your business does. Now, the confusing factor is that now our business licensing fees go through the state of Washington. And so it's not going to be clear necessarily to people who are applying for a business license that are home employed or self-employed, that put their home business location or their home location down as their business location, they're not necessarily going to know to call the city of Claylam and ask if this is right or wrong. So we could talk internally about how to clarify that, if it's possible to clarify that, because it could lead to more letters of refunding fees from our office due to a confusion. So that's something that Kathy and I can have a conversation about later, but the fee is just the fee for the permits that it is applicable to.
I just wanted to bring it up because I saw it and it reminded me, essentially, I think there's a question when you go to get the city endorsement, it says, is this located in a home? And if it, if you check that box, it automatically applies that fee. And so I think a lot of people are paying more than they have to. And so I just wanted to flag that something about fix.
Okay, that's a really good conversation. We'll have that conversation at City Hall and see if there's anything that can be done.
Thank you.
Okay, so Lucy, that's, since we're talking about these potential changes, how does that affect us passing this ordinance or not passing it? You know, is that, is that, is it sufficient that we will amend this at a future date or clarify it? Is that sufficient for this, for this hearing?
So the or, the intent this evening is to bring back anything that has strayed out into ordinance back under this resolution. And then we'll be able to amend the fee schedule by resolution in the future, which is a little bit more simple, although I did know in my staff report that staff or council in 2019 adoption of the fee schedule did want us to always have a public hearing for the fee schedule, which is why we had it, even though it's going to go forward as a resolution, we'll still have a hearing. Now, these changes aren't going to be happening this evening. As far as the home occupation permit, that's a discussion about the code and the business licensing process, so that doesn't apply to this fee. And the fee for the $10, we have noted that. And I think that we have the ability to interpret, you know, digital media, a CD or DVD as also a thumb drive and charge them $10. That would be my my guess. Our city attorney's on the line if we wanted to get her her opinion, but we could also change it at a later date if if everyone's comfortable with the rest of it.
Okay, so it looks like we'll continue this. Any questions that the council may have, but it looks like these ordinance 1600 is under D, under new business, and then 2028 is under H, under new business. Do we want to wait at that time to take care of those in that order? Or is there any other discussion we need to have about it? Doesn't sound like I'm hearing anything from anybody.
I see Councilman Harper.
I think for sake of continuity of Kathy and her minutes, if we could just stick with adopting them under new business, I think that would be prudent.
Okay. All right. Well, that's good then. If there, is there anything else, though, that anyone would like to bring up under this public hearing under the 2021 fee schedule? Okay, hearing none, we will take up these later in the agenda. So the public hearing is now closed completely. Okay, unfinished business. Now, there was a question about continuing discussion of emergency declaration that we got from our attorney. And that, we're really not going to discuss what that letter, we're not going to discuss the points of advice that our attorney has given us. But what it is, it's really more food for thought to go from here. And I don't know, there were some recommendations in there. But I'd open it again for discussion. If the mood of the council has changed at all about, we did have one vote on the emergency declaration and it, and it is quite a topic. I heard quite a bit about it at the legislative thing. You know, the emergency declarations were made for things like forest fires or earthquakes or floods. And this situation is a little bit different and it is causing, you know, trouble for people. But we were given some advice there and I would just open it up to the council to say what they think. Not much, so.
I'll mention, I will make future statement, but I need more time to weigh what the ramifications of that statement.
Okay, all right, all right, all right. Let's, we'll keep it on the agenda.
Can I confirm what I heard you say, though? So the document that we received is attorney-client confidential, so we can't discuss it as a council?
Yeah, so we're not going to, yes.
We're not decisions around this? Or use hypotheticals? I'm just trying to figure out, so do we have to use hypotheticals to have a, I just, it seems like if it's privileged, although nothing in there seem to be too privileged or seem too secret, do we need, how can we have a conversation about it as a council if we can't discuss the contents of the letter? I think that was my question last time.
Okay, and the thing.
I can clarify that, Jay. And Councilmember. When we discuss just not disclosing attorney-client privileged information, it's just, it's more of not saying Alex said this and here are the legal consequences are X, Y, and Z versus you can discuss maybe what's informing your position. And if that's something you learned in a memo from me, that's fine. It's just not disclosing what the attorney said, kind of generally speaking.
Got it. Okay, that is helpful. Yeah, I think I'm in the same place as Councilmember Harper. I think I need to reabsorb that memo and maybe we can have it on the next agenda.
Oh, yeah, what we, the consensus was until we this thing is resolved or something changes, we'll keep it on the agenda so that if if any council has something they want to say about it, there's the place for it. So if there isn't any other comments on it, we'll move on. So now now we are going to have the discussion of the Bullfrog Flats Development Agreement and Greg Dorn is going to walk us through what we've got so far. So Greg, can you hear us? Okay?
Yeah, thank, I can hear you just fine, Mayor. Can you and the council hear me? Okay.
Yes, sounds like it.
Great, thank you. Mayor, at the November 9th City Council meeting, there on the agenda was a offer from Suncadia to address condition 38 of the Bullfrog Flats Development Agreement. That was the condition that required the dedication of 12 acres and 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 the payment of money to the city to support the planning and development of a community park facility. At that meeting, the city council declined to accept the offer and directed us to convey to Suncadia that would like a revised offer and the council provided some specific direction on how to revise the offer so that it might be more acceptable. Following that meeting, the mayor and I had an opportunity to meet with Roger and shared the council's direct direction with him. And this afternoon, the city has received a revised proposal slash offer from Suncadia to address that condition 38. Mayor, it's on the agenda tonight. We received the the formal offer today, so wanted to take time at this meeting to explain the 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 basic content of the offer as we understand it. So for both the council and for members of the public, there's several that are listening in tonight with a particular interest on that. So we wanted to go over the proposal and then certainly to answer any questions that the council might have. We've provided the council with some additional information and we recognize that the councils had neither the chance to review the offer or to review any of the material that goes with it. So it may be that the council would like, you know, following the the presentation and certainly any questions to have time to be able to review the review the offer. We can certainly schedule a another discussion at the next council meeting or if there is a desire at a special council meeting, however the council wants to proceed. And if there are any questions for the city attorney, as the city attorney just noted, she cannot give legal advice to the council in a public meeting such as this. So if there are legal questions, then we can always schedule a, an executive session for the council to discuss any legal issues or concerns that they might have with the city attorney. But I wanted to start by going over what the what the proposal is, Mayor, in general terms. And as recall from previous discussion, it focuses on the dedication of 12 acres of land and the offer as revised includes the dedication of the 12 acres. We understand in discussions with with Roger that we'll have to talk through the language a bit with the attorneys on how to do the dedication to make sure that the city has access before any new roads are built. But I think that is certainly something that that we could address in the future, but the first point would be dedication of the 12 acres to the city in 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 the now, I would say, I'd say in the immediate near future, but I would say for purpose of discussion now. With that, Suncadia has offered to write a check to the city in the amount of $400,000. That would be, that would, check would be paid to the city within 15 days of acceptance of the offer. So dedication of 12 acres, a first payment of $400,000. There would then be a second payment of $1.6 million and that would occur on or before December 31st of 2021. So a year from now, there would be a second payment of $1.6 million. And then finally, the offer includes a provision that is based on language in the existing development agreement, which says that there would be a final payment of $2 million to the city upon issuance of the building permit for the 1,000th equivalent residential unit. And we use those terms because the equivalent residential unit could be a single-family home, it could be a multifamily, a part of a multifamily development, or in this case, there is the potential that it could be in the form of an RV pad or something like that. So there is flexibility in terms of what that was, thousandth would be. But that would then result in a third and final payment of $2 million to the city. So in 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 some total, as I've reviewed the written offer, it would be dedication of of 12 acres. And in three payments, a total of $4 million potentially to the city. There are some other provisions in the letter and if there was a point where, and, and, and interest in accepting the offer or considering the offer more detail, there would obviously have to be some discussions between the attorneys to get all of the fine points and the details spelled out so that it was clear. So this is a description of the basic principles or, or components of the, of the offer as, as, as we've seen it. Mayor, there's a, another important piece of information we've also included in the packet for the council, which is a second opinion, if you will, on the estimated cost to make the improvements that are identified in the development agreement. We have the estimates from, prepared by DA Hogan in 2018. And we've discussed those in previous meetings and we requested that a second estimate be provided to give us some more updated information. And so we turned to the firm of SCJ Alliance. They are a planning consulting firm that has done some work for the city in the past. And I know from experience is, has worked with a number of communities in planning for and designing park improvements. And so went to them and said, we would like a updated cost estimate and you utilize, based on your experience, Eastern Washington communities and smaller communities. When you are looking at what would be typical or industry accepted costs. And so they have provided a document that council, you'll see in your packet as a, a cost opinion. And the revised estimate by SCJ Alliance was just over $4 million, which is slightly more than the low estimate from DA Hogan and less than the high estimate. The estimates, of course, were, were prepared by different firms at different points in time. And so they approached their estimating slightly differently. So I've also provided a spreadsheet for the council that it tries to somewhat compare the numbers or put them side beside so you can see those numbers. But I could anticipate that the council might want to have some time to study those numbers and take a closer look at them and that you may have some questions after you've had a chance to review it. But we did want to provide that additional information. So you've got the first cost estimate, an updated cost estimate, a revised proposal from Suncadia. And then we did provide some additional information, a page that summarizes what the direction the council provided at the November ninth meeting and the original language in the development agreement governing condition thirty-eight. And back at a point in time, about a year ago, there was discussion of how a community planning process might proceed, once the land was dedicated to the city. And there's agreement on the, the finances of the dedication. And so pulled back out a letter or the beginning of a letter that included what some of the key steps might be, just to kind of complete the informational packet. So council, we realize that's a lot of information and you may have some immediate questions. But wanted to make sure that you had the revised offer and that it was also available to the public as well. So that's the information we have for you. And like I said, I would certainly attempt to answer any questions that I might have. Or, and Roger is available if there's any questions that you might have. But Mayor, I'll stop to see if you or members of the council have any immediate questions.
Um, well, I, I think we should open it up to the council. I see that Matthew has a question, go ahead, Matthew.
Well, so Stephen has his hand up first, so he can go first. I did want to make a request, can we put the letter up on the screen? I'm a visual learner, I have it in front of me if the public doesn't. Can we have, can we have Rob put it up on the screen?
Yes, we can definitely do that.
That'd be great. And then I will yield to council member Harper and then go after him.
Yeah, it's a, it's real simple. This letter is a slap in the face toward every single constituent that I've talked to and to our, to our city, or should I say, in light of the conversations I've had with my constituents, it's a slap in the face. We said thirty days, we get this two hours before, or a couple hours before our meeting tonight. Very clearly, section thirty-eight says half of the funds necessary to construct, start these facilities as the time the land is conveyed to the city and the other half, et cetera. So we went and gave our legal counsel direction not to, not to, not to strike a compromise, but we gave very clear tones that we want to take any and all legal actions necessary to get this resolved quickly. And telling us that the, half the money is going to come a year into the future possibly, and then another at the end, is not getting this dealt with in a quick time in resolution before the proposed, you know, there, obviously they want to sell this land and they can't do it without getting this resolved. And that's, this is the time that we have leverage. We've, we've, we've talked about, or it's been floated out there in public, that we could certainly lean the property because they're in default of contract. And honestly, personally, I didn't want to have to do that, but I think that this letter shows that they're going to continue to try to string us along and, and figure out ways of, like, can this go farther into the future? It needs to be resolved quickly. They did not respond within the time allotted. I think that we need to maybe give it a little bit stronger direction that our council go forward with proceedings that if this is not dealt with quickly, lean their property and get it dealt with. That's my opinion.
Okay, I can't, Matthew, I guess I see, but I'm not, I can't see the rest of the council, so I can't tell if anybody else raised their hand, but I know Matthew, you have a comment?
A comment question. I, I am also, I guess, dismayed by the fact that we got this an hour before the council meeting when we directed having a response back by December ninth, so we would have time to have, just, you know, read this ahead of time because we want to take action, this is important. I'm going to take a slightly softer tone than, than my colleague just did, but I think this could potentially be workable. You know, it seems like the $400,000 would be towards like a feasibility study, which I assume would take a while. So perhaps if it took a year, which it seems like it very possibly could, just having to do it with this dog park that we're still working on, I'm, something way bigger than that could potentially take a while. So assuming we did get that, we probably wouldn't be able to spend the rest of the money until a year from now anyway, which would get us that first fifty percent. So I'm, I mean, I like the total dollar figure we're getting. Number five is the one that I have questions on and, and Greg touched on this a little bit, but really defining what residential unit means, because from my reading of the proposed forty-seven degrees north project, they're looking at seven hundred units of, of housing and then an additional, I think it's like six hundred RV spaces. And so do RV spaces count as a residential unit? That would, that would need to be, you know, very well defined. And then knowing that that thousandth unit, according to the phasing plan that I see in there, we'd be looking at twenty twenty-five or twenty twenty-six, probably four to six years from now before we would see that additional money, which, you know, we would then have to look and say, okay, is that, we'll probably have, hopefully have the facility built by then, so are we going to use that additional payment for operations or something else? But making sure, I guess I would want to make sure that that money, it, it's written in there for us internally, that that's dedicated to the project, whether it's for capital costs or bond reimbursement or, you know, operating costs or whatever that might be. So my big question is, is about what residential unit means and, and what we would really reasonably be looking at to reach that thousandth unit, because that's a long time. But I guess I would say, I think, you know, we could leverage that, that 1.6 to help us, you know, work with foundations and other folks and, and grants to maybe get this done. So I like the direction this is going, but I think there's work we'd have to do on the, on the final.
A second, okay. I see that Ken is waving his hand and I know, I'll unmute, wait a minute.
Yeah.
My.
Thank you.
Am I muted and, oh, I'm unmuted, okay, Ken, go ahead.
Okay. I think we're pretty close, quite frankly. Yeah, it would have been nice to get it last Wednesday, but I, I won't hold it against them. The letter from Suncadia signed by Roger Beck on number five, he does plainly making the offer $2 million upon final plating of the one thousandth residential unit. And I just wanted to point out, Greg, in your letter, instead of plating, you, you said building permit in your letter. And I, I like what Roger gives us better than what's in your letter there. But also in Matthew's concern of what constitutes a residential unit, what Greg has is perfect. Single-family residences, multifamily RV pads and any other development equivalent to a residential dwelling and, and that we have that language in there. I, I want to make sure that, let's see, we, we have the letter in November twelfth that was given, a, a two-party agreement between the city and New Suncadia and not any kind of agreement with anyone else and personally, I'm satisfied with the offer from Roger Beck. I'm also comfortable with the, the new, the revised cost estimate. The $4 million. As far as getting $400,000 right away, I think that's wonderful. I wouldn't want to spend a penny of it until we turn dirt, quite frankly. And, and I think our community, we, we have a letter in here of, of potential people involved in putting this plan together and that's great. And that should be an all volunteer effort in the community to hash out what we're going to do. Anyway, I, I think we're very close with this offer myself. That's how I feel, so I want, I wanted to mention that.
So Jay, both Beth and Stephen have their hands up.
Looks like Jay's frozen.
Oh. It sure does.
Or he's really.
Oops, I just lost my screen.
Um, am I muted?
There you go, we got you.
There he goes.
All right.
Two points that I, I think I see that stick out to me that, that bother me are, one that the, from our agreement back on November twelfth, when we discussed this, we asked the agreement should include specific dates and consequences for failure to perform. I don't see any of that sort of mentioned of the failure piece, if they don't live up to their end, so to speak. Another concern of mine is when it comes to what is a development, you know, saying that we could have a thousand RV pads out there and we're good on our end of the bargain, doesn't fly with what was originally written on question seven of thirty-eight, where it says 1,000 residence units, counting both single-family and multifamily units. RV pads was never in that initial piece. And now we have Suncadia saying, well, we'll get a thousand RV pads out there and you can have your money. I, I would challenge ourselves to think about, is that the future of this community, a thousand RV pads or whatever it might be? It just seems that, that the community, yes, we want a community center, but we don't want it to be built around the idea that we're going to have a giant RV park in the middle of our beautiful community.
Okay, that's, that's another, um, Rob, I'd like to see the screen, okay? As I cannot see who else is on this. There, so now I, I really do want to be able to see the council and see whether or not there's any other. Beth, you have, do you, do you have a comment you'd like to make?
Yeah, when I had the ten minutes to read this before the meeting today, sorry, that was sarcasm. I was also concerned about number five. It seems that they're trying to pull into this agreement what the person they want to sell this to is going to be responsible for, but we don't really know exactly what their plans are for this new property. So I would like that statement revised. I'm not, I'm not unhappy with what they've proposed. They're trying to get out of this the easiest way they possibly can, I get that. I'm concerned about the one thousandth residential unit in the final plating. Number one, I don't really understand what legally, what the term final plating means. So where, at what point will this money be put into our hands to get this facility built? And I would just like to have some stronger wording of who the, what this future buyer's responsibilities will be, what they're, what we're getting from them, I guess. It's kind of pulling in two different things, so. Is anybody even hearing me?
Oh, I hear you, sure.
I can hear you.
Okay. So let me shut up for a few minutes.
The, the final plat, Beth, is just when they submit a plan of how the parcels will be.
Hey, hold it, Ken, hang on a minute. Let, John, there's others that haven't had a chance to speak yet. So let, John's got his hand raised, let's let him go and then, you know, Mickey probably want, might have a comment and then we'll start the discussion over. And so John, go ahead.
Okay. I'm not, I'm not really unhappy with the amount of money proposed. There are questions like, like Beth brought up. I guess it would be easier to make the decision if we knew how many units are currently platted. And when is there any kind of guess at when the thousandth unit is going to be planted? You know, it could be sometime into the future where half of the money that we're supposed to get might be years and years down the road. But I, I guess other than that, you know, the concerns, like I said, I'm not unhappy with the amount of money proposed. And I guess the other question to you is the carryover, you know, that was mentioned, like the new, the new buyer. Are, you know, will they be held responsible for fulfilling this? And as soon as somebody buys, we need to be in conversation with them. So it doesn't go another eighteen plus years before we get this taken care of.
Okay, John, you make some good points and I'll turn it back to Greg, because there is a process that concerns the city council and what, and whoever it is who takes over on this. Now, let's see, who else, somebody else though, Ken, Mickey, Mickey, you want to make a comment?
Yeah, I, I think the agreement is really great agreement and that Greg and everyone involved on it should be congratulated on it. As far as that, I I too am talking about this fifth one down here where they're going to agree there, but. You know, what keeps going through my mind is that I've been a salesman all my life and uh. You know, you have a facility like this and if you're putting a plat together. And if I was the land developer, I wouldn't want to wait until the thousandth. Pad or lot is in there to put there because as soon as you get that up and looking. That's going to probably drive twenty, twenty-five percent more of your sales. Because it's a beautiful structure and this is what we have to offer for you and your family. Whether you're vacationers or campers or whatever you are in there, so. I think it's a good paragraph. I I think that we're fighting something that's. There, I I would, I would say that if we had a good developer, he'd be willing to pay. Pay into the project just to have it for show at the time. And uh, the two billion dollars coming at the thousandth, I would say the park would be completed way ahead of that. Because it it's 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 really. A large part of whoever develops up there, this is what you have. You go to San Jose South, what do you see in there? You see parks and uh, uh, different facilities, little parks with the the kids place going on there. They're all there for a purpose. They're there for the people and the people want that kind of things. They want the trails and things like that. And as far as one thing that we haven't covered in here, we still have very limited parking down there. But I I believe firmly that the developer would would move to get more parking in there because. It is in his development there, but he want, he's going to make that into a feature. And he's going to be listening to us very carefully. And uh, I think that uh, uh. I don't, I think in this fifth paragraph, it's gives San Cadia uh, the right to uh, uh. The agreement to transfer the obligation, which is good, and uh, to a qualified buyer. Now, I would say that if we sign this thing here, I'm just wondering if when it says this is a qualified buyer of Bullfrog Prep. We've probably have a little bit of leverage on there too, what we think. Of the buyer that's coming in there. I think we'd have to be conferred with it. So I think that's a good paragraph where it could be reworked so it worked really extremely good for us and for San Cadia. That's all I'm saying.
Okay, uh, thank you, Mickey, um. Uh, Jay, you muted yourself. Jay, you muted yourself. Okay, I want to turn this back over to Greg. Um, there's been a lot of good questions brought up and we can.
I'd respectful, I'd respectfully ask that before uh, Greg, we have not finished the conversation between the council persons.
Okay, yeah, no, that's, that's, okay, I I, that's, we will continue to have that conversation. Um, I just wanted to point out that we do not have to make a decision tonight unless you want to. Uh, and I wanted to bring up, there's a lot of good points that have been brought up. And uh, you know, we need to discuss these further, but uh, go ahead, uh, who else? Uh, Stephen, I guess you have something else you want to say. Go ahead.
So I'm I'm hearing over and over, if I was to summarize many of these comments, I'm hearing if and whoever. A lot more than I'm feeling very comfortable with. If this happens, this will be great. If whoever wants to develop it. The goal and the intent of this council was not to negotiate with a imaginary buyer of this. It was to negotiate with the party at hand to fulfill section thirty-eight. Certain thirty-eight specifically sets forth a requirement of paying fifty percent upfront at the dedication of the land. We've all agreed that the dedication of the land has taken way too long and needs to be resolved immediately. In the spirit of section thirty-eight, the first half needs to be dealt with immediately. And for us to concede to any other type of agreement a year down the road, we can't feel comfortable with this. And then again, to bring in these future parties, I have no problem with somebody else coming in and buying the San Cadia. Uh, area and developing it, but we don't want to wait for them, for this community center to go forward and we don't want to make it conditioned. We have all the leverage right now. As soon as they convey it over to another party, we don't have that leverage. And then we'll be back at the same type of uh, we'll be at the same type of of issue. We need to deal with it now. We need to, we need to, at the very least, we need to work in the spirit of section thirty-eight, which is half the money upfront and the dedication of the land. Immediately, and that's what we all had a will to do, I believe, and I am certainly open to be corrected. We all had a will to do that when we directed uh, uh, legal counsel to take any and all appropriate actions. And now it seems like we're backpedaling because we see a big prize of four million, which may be an attainable and a good goal. But this whole, you know, latter logic of getting to that four million in an undefined time, I don't feel comfortable with. And I don't think anybody should feel comfortable with with, the most heartburn should be in number four, not in number five. It should be the fact that it could be a year and they've got a year to figure out some other way of kicking the can farther down the road.
Well, oh.
Okay, Matthew, go ahead.
I I mean, I will agree that I, that there is some discomfort that I also have with the idea of waiting. Um, for some unforeseen time when that thousandth unit goes in, which, you know, by a phasing plan of a current uh, potential. That's out there, again, would be like four to six years from now, I think that. You know, I've always joked that my grandkids might not see the thousandth unit, so I I, you know, I think that. We probably should should think about that more, but basically, you know, we're looking at two million dollars that we could get soon and I. Don't disagree with Stephen that perhaps waiting the year is. Uh, troublesome. I would think if San Cadia does make a sale, we we would want to put a provision in there that we get it. Before the sale goes through, right? We want to get it, you know, from them, um, but. Yeah, that's, that's what I got to say.
All right.
Mickey, go ahead.
Speak again. Uh, you know, there's different circumstances on this property this time. Uh, last time when the property was there, uh, we're talking about eleven, twelve hundred acres. Uh, but I mean, you're looking at seven or eight thousand acres uh, that were being there and uh. Uh, when the new developer came in, they took off in a different direction on developing the property. And uh, uh, the UGA wasn't a factor in that, in that plan. But you take someone that comes in and buys, in my own personal thinking. Uh, eleven, eleven hundred acres up there, they come in and they buy the property. They're buying it to develop, but they aren't buying it to sit on it for nine or ten years. They don't, they don't have other places to go. That is where they're going to make their living is on that property. So the long wait that we went through, uh, like you said there. You might like to see your grandkids play on it. Well, I'd like, I would, I thought my grandkids were going to play on there and they, they're off to college now, so uh. It didn't work out for me, but I I think anyone that's going into this right now, it will work out for them because. That is the project that will be what they're going to be making their money out when they buy this property. It will be a priority with them for all purposes, it probably will. So I think that everything in here is is uh, uh, it's. I I have a good feeling about it myself. That's all I'm saying.
Okay, uh, Mickey, uh, we have another comment that uh, Russon would like to make.
I I guess I'll just say this is that I I agree with Stephen and I I agree that. I I feel that getting this thing ten minutes before we sit down for a city council meeting. Shows us that San Cadia isn't, didn't take our initial approach seriously and waving four million dollars in front of us sounds great. It all looks great on paper, but this is for a small community that that is thinking about adding a thousand homes and this. There's so much more growth that has to happen before we put a thousand homes in, but nobody. I I don't think anybody really has listened at San Cadia to what our initial proposal was back on November twelfth. And I feel like I I'm not ready to make a vote on this until we get more information. I'm not a lawyer and I'm not a real estate lawyer. I don't understand this. I'm going to have to do a lot more research before I remotely agree for the city of Playellum. To say, yep, this sounds like a great deal. The four million dollar price tag does not overwhelm me to the point where I think, yes, let's go ahead and move with this thing.
Okay, and that's, and that's, I, really, we tried to make that clear at the beginning. We recognize the fact that you did not have much time and that we do need to continue this to another meeting and that's why. I'd like to uh, pass it back to Greg Dorn to give us a a process that maybe would be acceptable to the council.
Mayor, I've been listening to the discussion and and making some notes and. Uh, a a couple of things that I have noted is that, um, and and and. This is an outline of a proposal. It doesn't have the details and the and the question, the council's raising a number of of good. Um, uh, questions that should be addressed in the details. One of them would be. What is the um, um, guarantee or assurance that the city has that the. Payment to the second payment, the one that would occur in twenty twenty-one happens? And I, council has has said, um, um, some have said we might be able to wait. Others have said, I'm not sure that we can and and what I heard the question was, what kind of guarantee or assurance is there? That that second payment would happen, and so it seems like that would be an area where some more detail would be required. I've heard several questions about what is the, to make sure that it is clear about what is the triggering event for the third and final payment? And questions about the 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 details of that. Um, so that it's very clear about what's counted and what's not counted in that. It seems like that should be a a detail that is addressed as well. And the a third area that I've noted is to um, um, make sure that. There is um, language that addresses what happens. Um, if it is, if the property is sold, because this is an agreement with San Cadia. Um, and um, that one, um, I know there's been some discussion of. Of already, and I would think that the the attorneys could come up with language to address that. Because there is a provision in the development agreement that says the city has to um, um. Um, uh, give approval to the sale. So if if San Cadia was going to sell it to a third party, the city has the opportunity to review the terms of the sale and to approve it. And and so I would think that the attorneys could come up with language that would protect the city's interest. And to make it clear that it's an ongoing obligation, but those are three areas that I noted, mayor. That were raised by the council, that it seems that there should be some more detailed language. Uh, worked out by the attorneys to address each of those items as raised by the council.
I agree and I, you know, we really, let's see, I am, I, am I unmuted? Can you guys hear me? All right. We we need to have another meeting about this. I don't expect, after getting this two minutes for the meeting, that we're going to get a vote of approval or disapproval tonight. Um, and I agree, getting it the last minute is not a very uh, nice. But we need, we need to have another thing where we can have an executive session and. Speak freely with our attorney about what our objects are, our objectives are, and I would like to uh. Uh, come up with something that's agreeable to uh, the council on when we can have a special meeting for this very subject. Um, you know, next Monday or uh, our next council meeting or.
Do it.
What's that?
Said before Christmas, let's, let's keep the momentum going on this.
Okay, so, well, then, uh, let's uh, let's agree to have a meeting next Monday. Is that, is that agreeable with the council? That we will continue this and we will make provisions for an executive session? So that we can speak freely with our attorney and uh, uh, and this will give everybody a chance to kind of mull this over. You know, it was a shotgun approach. I agree. It's not a, I, and I never intended, I never thought for a minute that we would make a decision tonight on this. Um, so and we, we, we've made note of all those and we will uh, come back with uh, additional information. And in the meantime, as you go over this, if you have questions that you want to address with the council and stuff, get that to uh. Me or Rob and we'll be sure that it gets uh, on the agenda for this special meeting. Um, are there any, uh, what, what does anybody uh, uh, have anything additional to say about this at this point? Okay, hearing none, uh, we will have a special meeting next uh, Monday at six o'clock. And of course, it will have to be a Zoom meeting and uh, we will have uh, a continued discussion on this thing. I appreciate everybody.
Jay, I'm not sure, somebody, uh, Roger just turned on his camera. I'm not sure if he wants to say something or.
Well, I don't know. I think that this is a, I, you know, uh, I I think we ought to just wait until uh. You know, I, I I think it'd be better for us to leave it right where it's at right now. Really, I do, unless.
Jay, I might, I might be able to answer one or two questions very quickly that might.
Okay, all right, all right, go ahead.
First off, we're, you know, remember that um, I I thought the the direction was to come back to the council. With a two, with a, with a proposal that dealt only with the city and San Cadia and didn't deal with a third uh, party. And so that's what I did, but we're fine. I'm fine with uh, putting in the agreement that a. RV unit or RV site would be considered a residential unit. I I, I'm fine with that. Um, that might make the sort of the number five problem at least be less.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna, I'm gonna object and I'm gonna ask that these type of discussions be made between uh, you and uh. Um, Mr. Beck, that this is not the format. We're, we're discussing what was proposed and then to try to. Pitch slash PR uh, in the public eye right now is not really the, the, it's not. If we have specific questions, I'm all for that. If council wants to ask questions, I don't think this is appropriate, the pitching, you know, et cetera of the, of the deal.
Roger, we we really should uh, let this be uh, simply a council decision and we'll have plenty of time to uh. Address the concerns that you've heard tonight. Uh, we will have another meeting on it. I do believe it would be better just to uh, let it lie the way it is for now and we will continue on that way, okay? So, um, it's, it's better to that. Beth, you have a comment?
I actually work next Monday night. Could we have the executive, the special meeting on a different night?
Ooh, 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 let's see, let's see, let's see. Ah, okay, here's, here's the, okay, you have.
I work Monday and Tuesday, so.
You have what on Monday and Tuesday?
I work Monday and Tuesday.
Saying Tuesday would would be a real push for me. Okay, council, uh, D whiz, what is the date for next Wednesday? Oh, my God.
Twenty third.
Twenty third, is everybody up for that? Stephen says you.
Good.
Yes, it's yes. Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys. It'll be the twenty-third.
All right, perfect. Thank you.
All right, and uh, all right, so that, that, that settles that for now. You know, we, it is, it is, this was, was not the best situation, but we're going to do better with it. Okay, so with that, we'll get on to new business and we've already been here for a while, you guys, so let's see if we can't get through this sort of stuff. Okay, so we're going to go down to uh, Rob, um, and that you have ordinance number fifteen ninety-seven and this is a twenty twenty budgeted amendment, number four already. What's going on?
Yeah, what's going on? Okay, thank you, Honorable Mayor, City Council. This is another budget amendment. Essentially, it's for the water fund, sewer fund, garbage fund. The water and sewer funds is a pass-through. Uh, Dr. Horton. D R Horton has, has purchased basically so many permits this year that the capital reimbursement that we, that we take in and then pay, pay back to Suncadia was just more than we expected. And then the garbage, the garbage fund, what happened there is basically there's more like construction dumpsters, big dumpsters that, that they're just, we're collecting more and again, waste management get, you know, it's a pass through. So there's just those three funds that need, need to be updated before the end of the year and recommend passing ordinance fifteen ninety-seven.
Okay. What's the, Ken, go ahead. Do you have a question?
I make a motion that we accept ordinance fifteen ninety-seven as presented. This is essentially just cleaning up our budget for twenty twenty before the end of the year. And it's just adjustments to, to finalize things.
Okay, it's been moved by Ken and seconded by Ruston to pass ordinance fifteen ninety-seven for our budget amendment. Questions on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor with aye? Opposed? Hearing none, ordinance number fifteen ninety-seven is passed. And now we go down to ordinance fifteen ninety-eight. I think we just did know the garbage rates. What's going on there, Rob?
Okay, thanks, Mayor, Council. So fifteen, ordinance fifteen ninety-eight is an increase in the garbage rates. Earlier this year, of waste management, we met with waste management several times. They actually wanted to redo the entire contract for, for the city. We met with the committee and we basically decided, you know what? It's too soon to change the entire contract. So let's just go with what we've, what we've had for the last. I can't remember how long this contract's, five or six years. Waste management said, okay, that, that's great. Let's, let's just keep going. But they, they will want to start, I think even in March, to relooking at the twenty twenty-two contract. But with that, throughout, we only want to raise, we typically only raise garbage rates at the end of each year if, if needed. Last little feedback here. Last so the, last year, you know, during the year, you know, in the current contract, waste management will raise, can, can raise their rates. And so that has happened twice during the year. We don't come back to the ratepayers because we kind of figure that in. There's a little bit of buffer here and there. But so at this time, I relooked at all of the rates. And if you go to the last, the last page where it says twenty twenty-one garbage rates, basically it's a three percent increase across the board, except for those that have a little ten percent. I don't know if you guys can see that. They'll have a, they'll have a ten percent right there. And it's simply, you know, we'd looked at each, each category and this fund, def, you know, it's definitely not a flush fund. It's, it's basically barely holding its own. And we need to, the staff feel like we, we need to raise these rates so that we keep on top of it. And it doesn't become a, a negative fund. And so I, I, I recommend we raise, we, we adopt ordinance fifteen ninety-eight. Any questions?
Well, I sure hate raising rates all the time, but I don't see how we cannot raise them since they're requesting more money from us.
Is that a motion, Ben? I mean, Beth?
No, this comment, sorry.
Stephen, did you make a motion to?
No, I just like to make comment. I do appreciate our staff and others more intimate involvement in SWAC and monitoring that as we haven't had a lot of that in the previous years. And so I think we're getting the best deal that we can get, you know, considering everything. And, and so I would be in, in support of, I would, I would motion that we that we approve the rate changes presented.
Ordinance fifteen ninety-eight.
Or ordinance fifteen ninety-eight. And take a second.
I'll second it.
Okay.
Beth, John, beat you to it.
I know.
Well, at least I can see now who's doing what. Thank you, guys. To, motion was to approve ordinance number fifteen ninety-eight reluctantly. Questions on the motion? If not all in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, hearing none opposed, the motion is passed. Okay, now we're down to ordinance number fifteen ninety-nine. And, and look at this, Matthew.
Look at this.
This is, there you go. Why don't you walk us through the, the fire code update? Okay?
So the, the redlining is a little confusing. I apologize, but it's showing our, our changes that we made. So we've been talking about this for a month and a half or so. But this is the result of our ad hoc committees discussions about updating fireworks code. In twenty fourteen, the council passed ordinance fourteen sixteen, which outlawed the possession sale and discharge of fireworks within the city limits. I think, so we, we had a discussion, decided that discharge was not something that we wanted to address at this point. But as I previously said, we, we talked about removing the possession outlaw and the sale. But with, with very clear instructions that you still cannot discharge within the city. And you would, you would need to go where it is legal in the county, which there are places. So this cleanup essentially would get rid of the unlawful possession. It would incorporate the language from the RCWs, which regulates when fireworks can be sold around the Fourth of July and around New Year's and, and adopts that language that's in there. And then gets rid of the penalty for possession and then puts in an entire chapter then about the sale of fireworks, which includes a permit, which I believe we still need to work out the fee for. So we'll need to do a, an update on the, on the fee schedule for that. They have to get, they have to have insurance, proof of insurance. It, it has the, the timing, when the stands can be put up. The types of stands, you know, minimum stuff for, for building code and getting the fire chief's approval and all of that. So it's quite extensive in terms of making sure that we have our ducks in a row when it comes to these stands. They have to be freestanding stands and they have to very clearly post that letting off fireworks in the city is, is still illegal. So that's long short of it. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Matthew?
Just comment. I want to thank city staff and legal for working on this. And I would move that we that we adopt ordinance fifteen ninety-nine as presented.
I'll second.
All right, let's see. Ken's, Stephen made the motion to adopt and Ken Square was the one that, that lit up. So we'll give Ken the second to adopt ordinance number fifteen ninety-nine to update the fireworks code. All questions on the motion?
Has there been any money increased in law enforcement for them to enforce no discharging in the city if we're selling them in the city? No.
Can I, can I talk to that?
Stephen would like to address that.
We've made it very clear about it. And also there will be extreme, you know, there'll be extreme education happening at the time of sale. And there's already, you know, there's already enforcement in place when we enacted, I shouldn't say we, when the council enacted this originally, there was, there was already that. And we've also had testified that there's been less enforcement since we had the prohibition of sending them off. Now, we happen to prohibit sending them off and also their sale, et cetera. So we really don't know how to respond to this. And it'll likely, we'll find out on July fourth. How, what the appropriate response. But other cities don't have an extreme problem with this that sell it. That we've seen. So I, I do, I do understand the, the concern. But I, I don't think that, that the extreme reaction is warranted at present.
And I will just note that we included both and Chief Mills in the conversation and they, they spoke up about the, the discharge portion. And we, we took that advice, but I, I don't recall anyway, hearing from Chief Land that he felt like there was, you know, that this would change. But I certainly, if it's in order, would, would, we have to let him address it if he had, wants to say something.
I could speak to that. Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So, yes, when you start selling fireworks again, even though you're gonna put the proper sites like we asked, we absolutely expect we're gonna see way more people discharging fireworks illegally in the city limits. And, and that's something we would try to address as, as always. Fourth of July is a big weekend for us. This last year, of course, was a big old flop with the COVID stuff. But Fourth of July normally is our busiest holiday of the year and we have all of our people out. So as far as incurring more cost for doing more enforcement, like Beth was talking about, we're already gonna be out there in full force as much as we can anyway, for, with the staffing we have for the Fourth of July anyway. But yes, I fully expect we're gonna get way more fireworks complaints once they're sold again in city limits.
I agree.
Yes, and it could be an educational thing, like when we first banned fireworks at all. We still had some fireworks complaints, less than other years, but you know, it took a good year, year to two years to get more, more compliance. And I foresee that happening again, yes.
And any other questions on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so there's five in favor and two opposed. Ordinance number fifteen ninety-nine will pass on. Okay, so now we'll go down to ordinance sixteen hundred and that brings us back to Lucy Temple.
Thank you, Mayor. We're back to the staff report that I, or the packet that I presented earlier before the public hearing. It's the same one for, for all of this related to the fee schedule. The staff report and, and I explained earlier about the ordinance fifteen eighty needing to be repealed so that we can put the staff time back under resolution for more ease of amendment in the future, which was the original intent. When we consolidated all thirty-one ordinances in twenty nineteen. Ordinance sixteen hundred repeals ordinance fifteen eighty, which isolated the twenty twenty staff time rates from the original twenty nineteen fee schedule, contradicting its original intent. This will allow for future fee schedule, staff time, consultant and legal fees and equipment rates to be adopted by a single resolution with a public hearing in the future. It's pretty straightforward. So my requested action is to review and adopt ordinance sixteen hundred to repeal ordinance fifteen eighty, which will facilitate the adoption of the resolution in the twenty twenty-one fee schedule.
Okay, with that, questions from the council? Hearing no questions. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance sixteen hundred?
Yeah, I make a motion that we adopt ordinance number sixteen hundred.
And a second perhaps?
Second.
Moved by John Glondo, seconded by Matthew Lund to adopt ordinance sixteen hundred. Questions on the motion? Ken, you got a question?
Actually. Okay, fifteen eighty. I think I followed this pretty much. This gives the fees that we charge in a little more sensible way, basically. And it includes the short-term rental fees. Is that not correct?
Actually, Councilman Ratliff, this ordinance only repeals a previous ordinance. This does not set the twenty twenty-one rates. That will be in a resolution in order that it appeared on the agenda. So this is just to set up to allow for that resolution.
Yeah, okay, okay. That's, yeah, I'm fine.
Any other questions on the motion? If not, all in favor with aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none, ordinance number sixteen hundred is passed. So now, now we'll go down to ordinance sixteen oh one, adopting short-term rental regulations. And this is Gary Burns slash Lucy Temple tag team thing. Gary, you want to address this for us?
I, I will give it a start, Your Honor, and members of the council. I here this evening as the Chair of the City Planning Commission. I'm a recent addition to your planning commission and even more recent as the Chair. But I'd like to speak to the proposal for the short-term rental ordinance. The city council apparently placed a moratorium either near the end of twenty nineteen or early twenty twenty that was to expire in October of this year. And the planning commission with lots of vacancies and COVID had a difficult time establishing an ordinance. However, what I will say is that you have some dedicated folks that have been working on this, including Lucy Temple and the current members of the planning commission. And when I came on, they had researched other communities for short-term rentals and established a pretty good ordinance, in my opinion. As you look down through that, you will see that the real goal of this planning commission is to not impact the affordable housing and the affordable housing element of the Clealum Comprehensive Plan. A key issue in the first paragraph is the maintaining of existing residential neighborhoods and continued sense of community and economic strength. Short-term rentals offer an economic opportunity, but they also offer the potential for impact. So in going through this ordinance and, and the thought of regulation, they were going to require a business license and a permit that Councilman Ratliff just spoke to, as well as an inspection and both law enforcement and fires, I understand, were consulted. They're going to have to be able to, to deal with the, the regulation enforcement and, and safety of the community. So what you see before you is what I consider to be a really good start on, one, allowing short-term rentals. I would ask Lucy Temple to talk to the spacing and numbers of those because I found that really interesting and she assures me that she can make that work. It's a distance spacing. Essentially, they can only be so close together. Uh, they can only be so close together and that would really limit how many there would be total in the community. And no, it, no one neighborhood would be severely impacted. And I think that's an issue that. Was well thought out and. Uh, also, no one owner can have more than three of these short-term rentals. Short-term being defined as twenty-eight days or less. With that, I would. Step aside, Lucy, and let you have it, or questions from the council. This is the recommendation of the planning commission to you.
Thank you, Gary. Yes, um, the planning commission's recommendation letter from our Chair Gary Burnt was included in your packet. And I will speak to um, what was just discussed about the spacing. So that's one of the key elements of this code. Um, in, in the two zones where. This would be allowed, it's actually more than two. It's. One general category of commercial zoning and another general category of residential zoning. So it doesn't specify which commercial zone or which residential zone. Um, so in commercial, which would be in your downtown area or um, anywhere else, its own commercial. No spacing limitations on the number of short-term rentals, but in residential. The, they should be separated by at least two hundred and fifty feet between parcel boundary. As confirmed by the city based upon this Kittens County Assessor's mapping portal data. So we have an application package that is ready, but. The last piece is to develop a map and that map, I would update it anytime we had a new. Permitted short-term rental to include its location, but first I would consult the map to determine whether it meet, met the distance requirements. Now, the data that supports this was a community survey in early twenty twenty. The planning commission conducted a, a virtual. Survey of the community and got a really overwhelming response. And the response was that they wanted to have kind of a middle-of-the-road spacing. Not next door to each other, but not completely across from the city from each other. So this is what um, the answer was in the community survey. The way that we can do that is by parcel boundaries because. It would be very difficult for me to go out and physically measure from. The side of someone's house to the side of someone else's house, but it's very easy to do it with parcel boundaries. That is what the commission um, decided upon. By the way, another detail here is that there was a public hearing on November seventeenth. Duly noticed public hearing where they collected additional comments. We did run a State Environmental Policy Act checklist for non-project action on this to collect additional. Um, comment and yes, did circulate it to city staff, including legal, fire, police. The building department put in a specific. Um, safety checklist as well, based on the fire and building codes. And. The main kind of meat of the code was developed by really researching what other cities. Had done and the commission came to, together with an example. Of a city that has been doing this for a while, had a really good, straightforward. Code process, application package, they just kind of had a package that we could tailor to our own use and that's. What we did and then added in all the community comments and staff comments to it.
Okay. Questions from the council?
Matthew? Uh, Lucy, how was the public comment? Did we get? Much?
No, um, we did not get very much. Um, interaction with the community during the public comment periods, but we did get. Um, you know, one of our CIPA comments was from Chief Bland. Um, we, we did. Reach out, I think we had a lot, lot more interaction with the community during the community survey. Which I believe was April, May. It was going to be a big community meeting. That we were going to have at the senior center and then, of course, we canceled it and turned it into a virtual. Um, survey, but I think we, we got great responses from that. To collect the information.
Got it. Um, so. I want to thank the planning commission for, for all the work they put into this. Um, I know, being on a planning commission, it's. A lot of homework, right? We do, we do the council's homework and that's, and uh, we appreciate that they do that. Um, I, I'm curious if uh. There would be concurrence from the council that we perhaps. Not vote on this tonight. Um, since we got this on Friday, I haven't had a chance to, I think, absorb their seven months of work that's in this document and. I would like a little bit more time to make sure that I. Understand it all before we vote on it. Um, so that would, that would be my request. I don't know if it's appropriate. We could put it on. As the other item for the special meeting. I don't know if we can do that, but I'd like a little more time personally. I think this is a important piece of legislation, I think. I'd like to have a little more time with it.
I. I'm fine with what Matthew just said. Uh, it doesn't have to be passed tonight.
Okay, but I, but I would refrain from adding it to our other meeting. I really would like that meeting, the special meeting we have be about that one subject, so we have plenty of time for that. So if uh, the council is amendable, we put it on the uh. Agenda for the, the next first meeting we have. Uh, Matthew have a comment?
I'm perfectly, oops, am I? I am perfectly fine with uh, following Matthew's request and waiting until the first meeting in January.
Okay, um, actually, uh, John Glondo, we have a question.
I guess a question for Gary and Lucy. Is that, does that meet what you're trying to do if we wait until then, or is there any urgency that is?
Councilman, um, but when I came on board of the planning commission, it was. The council's moratorium that was kind of driving the issue to meet the deadline that was set by council. And uh, Lucy, I believe that was in October, so. I don't think there's going to be a big land rush for short-term rentals in the next couple of weeks.
I do have a question for our legal counsel who looks to be still on the meeting. Um, if. The moratorium ended mid-October and we do have applications. Are we processing those applications? I guess maybe.
Sorry, I've, took me a second to unmute. Um, yeah, you would be processing them without any regulations in place or. Under how you've been processing them in the past.
And would they then become non-conforming?
Uh, because.
Because we have no code.
In certain.
Come in later.
Right. Correct.
So in light of that, how, I guess, how difficult is it if we were to extend the moratorium until our next meeting?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Uh. I got a question. Lucy, I didn't quite under, if I can talk, I didn't quite understand if you're doing one parcel or the two hundred and fifty feet or both.
I see.
Either or.
Yeah, so we would be looking at, so if your house was on parcel A. We would be measuring the two hundred feet, starting, two hundred and fifty feet, starting at the edge of your parcel boundaries. To the next parcel boundary. That's proposing a short-term rental. So it would not work for side-by-side houses and depending on the parcel size, it would not. Sometimes work for, um, you know, two doors down or three doors down. It just depends on the size of the parcel.
Hmm.
Okay.
This is, thank you.
Ken, hang on, uh, let, Ruston has a question.
Are there, Lucy, are there any um, short-term rentals now that are um. Already side-by-side? For instance, the Johnson family wants to come from Seattle and spend the weekend in Clealum. And they rent the two houses. Are there already uh, short-term rentals set up that way?
I'm not sure. I know we do have short-term rentals in, in the city limits. Um, I believe there are um. Probably five to ten of them. Um. But I don't, I don't think that any of them are side-by-side, but I did get several. Requests for information early in twenty twenty and late twenty nineteen, which kind of, I, I took to the planning commission. Um, which spurred on us, you know, working on that. And those were from people who were intending to buy several homes. And run them all as short-term rentals. Um, but I don't know if those homes were on adjacent lots.
Okay, and then can, can you go over again the, the reasoning behind the two hundred and fifty feet? Because it would seem, I, I want to make sure that the community knows why, like, they have two houses side-by-side. Canton Johnsons come over and rent them so they can all be close in proximity, so to speak.
Yes.
Thanks, Lucy.
Sure, the reason for the spacing questions that we put in the survey. Was to try to determine whether or not the community had a preference for what, for maybe if. Both sides of their home became short-term rentals or three properties across the street all in a row became short-term rentals or. If, you know, because that really does have an effect on the community, has an effect on what your. Community is comprised of and your sense of community, because the people who are coming in, short-term rentals. You know, they don't, their kids don't live across the street. Um, their kids aren't riding bikes down the sidewalk. Um, they're not, you know, paying local. Taxes, they are a part of our economics, but they're not. Community members, so they have a different value system for their surroundings in general. I know I'm, I'm a great person when I go and rent an Airbnb, but not everyone is. And so the situation is what, the questions that were posed. Were kind of getting at, what does this do to a community? And that was a lot of the research that was done by the planning commission was. What are the impacts to the community? We are a small town and we already have. Um, such a huge tourism base that if you allow these to go together. In any um. Number, it can really take away a neighborhood. And those were also some of the observations that I made and others made when Roslin was going through their short-term rental. Um, legislation, um, they had several short-term rentals that were kind of clustered in an area. And there are many more complaints from that area, um, from what I understand. I see um, Officer, or Chief Bland nodding his head. Because he's probably responded to them. So, um, you know, the two hundred and fifty feet, we asked on a kind of a scale. Do you care if they're right next to each other? Do you want them to be across the city from each other? We also gave examples of what that would look like, what five hundred feet looks like, what two hundred feet looks like in terms of the size of a city block. So the consensus was that people wanted them to not be door-to-door-to-door short-term rentals, but that. You know, that having them two hundred and fifty feet apart allowed an adequate number to be able to have um, the opportunity to come in. So there was a lot, there was a lot of information behind that.
If, if I could, I, I would add to that, that what we looked at as a commission is, one, remember. Uh, protecting and preserving affordable housing for residents, not turning Clealum into a short-term rental haven. But also, um, that two hundred and fifty-foot spacing. Is, is a ceiling. It will put a limit as to how many short-term rentals can actually physically be in the city. And Lucy, as I recall, we thought somewhere around forty would be where that would land.
And if you think about, what do we have, eleven hundred residential properties or something? I mean, like forty is kind of a lot in our small community. Uh, but as it grows. As it grows, it would still be the two hundred and fifty, so we're not putting a maximum number. It just has to do with geography and spacing to allow people to have a little bit of breathing room between those short-term rentals.
Well, it's where you're starting your two hundred and fifty-foot measurement. You know, if you're starting from the house, that's different than if you're starting from the fence line.
Right.
And uh, like where I'm out here, I, you know, my neighbor is a uh, is a, is. He's got a large one. He's got a ten-bed one next door. And uh, um, but two hundred and fifty feet from my fence line, he would be fifty feet. But he's probably three hundred feet from my house. You see where I'm going with this?
Yes.
I, I think when you measure from the fence line or property line, you're, you're uh. Eliminating a potential in an area, in a few areas that have space between their homes.
Yes, and that's understood.
And you know, like I, like I, like I test, like, like I said there before, these people are absolutely. They're the friendliest people in the world. They're walking up and down the street, riding their bikes and, and uh, they pass them through or walking. I mean. And I got no objections. And, you know, there's probably fifteen cars over there every weekend. Uh, and they're very polite and everything there, but. I don't know anyone else that's going to put a, one in in the neighborhood. But the thing is, you restrict the whole neighborhood from if someone had a home that they wanted to do that with, could do it here.
Yep.
I just say, you're going to start from the fence line.
Yep.
So you're, you're pretty, a big barrier on us, that's all.
And, and I appreciate that and we, um, that was discussed at the commission. But what's also was discussed was our ability to regulate the regulations we're putting into place. And I have, uh, you know, we have several permits that we deal with the city. We have many, many different things going on and the planning department has one staff. And what will happen is that we would have to go out, we either have no regulation on spacing. Which is, kind of goes against the, the um. The values that the planning commission set up, which you can see in your recitals in the ordinance. Or we, um, we find, you know, that we measure between the houses, which is. Very um, time-consuming and a little bit prohibitive with the time that we have and the staff that we have. Or we use the tools that we have at hand and the easiest thing is the Kittens County Assessor's database where you can put. Um, a two hundred and fifty-foot buffer around a parcel. So in the future. You know, maybe we could find, um, you know, and when we have additional staff or if we have a different method. To, to do those measurements, but this, this is what's proposed. So if council would like that changed, it can always go back to the planning commission. For greater discussion on how to do it. Um. So the two hundred and fifty foot based on the property lines was honestly, it was my suggestion on the ability to regulate it.
Well, it, and right now, it's the only reasonable way um, to, to take a look at. It, you would have to go physically measure from house to house to house. Whereas lots, uh, property lines and, and I certainly understand where Councilman Holt's is coming from. But it also would mean that the next. Uh, short-term rental in that neighborhood would be two hundred and fifty feet from his property line. So you have a pre-existing situation, but it's probably not one to perpetuate.
But Gary, there's fourteen homes here. And uh, my guess is that more than one of them will turn into a. Uh, a rental out here. And they're good income, they're good income for the city. And it's actually, uh. You know, it is one of the strongest income makers for small cities that are going. You take like San Katia. There's uh, I think last count that I had, which was before we sent this into a moratorium. Uh, there were seventy-nine of them up there.
Nine to that.
No, that's a lot for short-term rentals.
How many do you want? You know, what percentage of the community do you want involved with that?
Well, I'm saying, I'm not saying that we want them, I'm saying. Look what revolves around, is what I'm trying to say. You know, here we are as a city that uh, has a lot of hiking and everything there and we're trying to bring revenue in and everything like there. But yet we're turning our backs with a regulation like that. uh, on future revenue. And uh, these people that come over here, uh, and uh, you know, they're usually two families go together to buy them. This is what I got figured out. But I don't know if I'm right. Uh, that uh, uh, they're good spenders downtown, too. They're gonna want, so Will, when the restaurants are open, they'll eat three meals downtown. And going on there. You don't see these people out barbecuing and things like there. You know, they, that you know, five, six, four o'clock, they take all high on the car and leave. They're gone for about two hours. I'm guessing they go eat.
Well, I'm, I'm just uh, providing you with the conversations and, and misegenations that we went through trying to develop um, the assumption, you want to reg, you want to regulate it, if you don't want to regulate it, that's different, so.
I think the, I'd, I'd like to ask uh, if we could move on to the next, if it, if the council's wishes.
I think that's a good idea.
Item.
Okay.
Just one other, one other question. This does not affect our existing uh bed and breakfast uh, uh, ordinances and regs, does it?
No.
Okay.
Okay, we're moving on. Um, so now we'll go to uh, the uh, resolution number uh, 2020 dash 026, and this is the distribution of uh 2021 Hotel Motel Tax Fund Grants. And uh, Stephen Harper will walk us through that. Stephen?
Yeah, um, this is just the city's responsibility for the, the consolidated uh, um, distributions. And I want to thank uh, Matt and John for their tireless efforts of having to spend a day in Zoom. I unfortunately was not able to go. Uh, last several years I've participated in the county's process, but uh, logistics did not allow me to. So honestly, they deserve most of the credit with this. With that, I would uh, move that we pass resolution 2020 dash 026.
I'll second it. Okay, it's uh, moved by Stephen and seconded by John Galando to adopt resolution uh, 2020 dash uh, 026, and that's adopting the distribution of the 2021 Hotel Motel Tax Fund Grants. Uh, are there questions on the motion? Uh, hearing none. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed. Hearing none, uh, resolution uh, 2020 dash 026 is passed. Now, uh, we're gonna go to uh, a resolution uh, 2020 uh, 027. And that's uh, gonna be, and this is police, uh, a policy update, and Kirk Bland will explain what we're trying to do here.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, just want to confirm that everybody was able to get this resolution in their packet and had an opportunity to review it. Um, just to summarize it, the President Trump put into executive order number 13929, and that is a requirement that all police departments must meet if they're to receive any type of federal funding. The two prongs um, associated with that executive order is that all police departments' use of force policies must comply with all applicable federal, state, and local law. And the second part was that the applying agency maintains use of force policies that prohibit the use of chokeholds in, except the situations where the use of deadly force is allowed by law. Those are the two uh, prongs that have to be in place to allow us to apply uh, for any type of federal grant. Uh, upon review of our policy, uh, it, those are in there. It does specifically state that chokeholds are considered deadly force. It cannot be used in any other situations. However, um, our policy also defines it as neck holds as both chokeholds and lateral vascular neck restraints, commonly known as the LVNR. They combine, our policy currently combines two of those maneuvers as neck holds. And what I'm proposing is that language be added to our policy to separate those two maneuvers because they're completely different and still be in compliance with the executive order. Um, I wrote up what the policy should read. That's been put through to legal. Legal assisted in putting this into resolution form, and that's what you have in front of you today. Um, so I'm asking that the council authorize the mayor to sign resolution 2020 dash 27, which would allow the police department to immediately adopt the updated language under our policy for use of force under section 7.2.10.
Okay.
So moved.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Yes, um, it's moved and, and is seconded by?
Second.
Uh, moved by Stephen Harper and seconded by Ken Ratliff to uh, adopt um, a re- resolution uh, 2020 seven that clarifies uh, our uh, you know, restraint. To make it, is that clear as mud for you guys? Questions on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Opposed. Okay, there is none opposed. So resolution 2020 uh, 027 has passed. So now we're gonna go to.
Point of order, point of order, sir.
Okay.
I don't think we totally uh, resolved how we were going to handle resolution 2020 dash 026. Um, we were discussing the consequences of not signing it now versus, or not passing it now versus waiting.
Yeah, we decided to put it on the next agenda in January, the next meeting, the first meeting in January. I'm. Oh geez, Wes, that's, that was uh, so say that again, I'm sorry, Beth.
I'm sorry, wrong one. I'm sorry, the wrong one.
1601.
1601, sorry about that. We had discussed the consequences of not signing it now, the uh, short-term rental agreements.
Yes.
Plan. Um, and we didn't totally finish that conversation. We just kind of drifted off.
Um, well, we, the, I, I'm, I'm going to assume that it was that we, uh, it was a request that this uh, ordinance be continued to the meeting in January, and there was considerable concision uh, uh, discussion afterwards. Is that correct, Matthew?
Well, I, I guess, I think I know where Beth is coming from, and I, I maybe we should put a pin in it formally, but right, so I had requested time to read it, and we talked about moving into the first meeting in January, but there is the um fact that the moratorium is up, and so um, we're gonna have a period now where there's, people know that we're considering this. Now there's this period of time in between without a moratorium, and I guess we probably should make sure that.
Do something.
We'll still fine with that, or if we want to do something different.
Okay, so.
Then I would, I would motion that we uh, table ordinance 1601 to the first meeting in January and seek a second.
Second the motion.
Okay, just moved a second to table this motion. Uh, all those in favor with aye?
Aye.
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 Okay, it's tabled. We'll bring it up for the next meeting, Beth.
You want to seek opposing? You want to seek opposing?
Oh, I am sorry. That's right. Are those opposed to the motion? Beth, alright, see, even though we, okay, so there's one opposed. Um, and I understand.
We need to deal with the moratorium, so.
Yep, I, I agree.
Yeah.
So it goes, uh, we, we put it off for a little bit longer. I, alright, thank you for that, Beth. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Um, okay, now we'll go down to uh, a resolution 2020 dash 028, and this is adopting the uh, 2021 fee schedule, and we go back to Lucy Temple.
Here we are again, talking about the same thing, just a little bit different. So this is the actual resolution 2020 dash 028 that adopts the 2021 fee schedule. I've told you what it does, um, as far as uh, the summary that's in the um, staff report that explains Exhibits A and B. You know everything there is to know about it at this point. Um, if you don't, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I would move that we adopt uh, resolution number 2020 dash 028.
Second that motion.
Okay, it's been moved by Matthew Lund and seconded by Ruston Weaver to uh, um, uh, pass resolution uh, 2020 dash 028. Questions on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed, those opposed. Hearing none, opposed, uh, resolution 2020 dash 028 is been passed. Okay, now we'll go down to uh, um, 20, uh, 2020 dash 029. This is uh, a surplus police equipment, and we're going back to our police chief Kirk Bland.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Council. So this is just a house cleaning, uh, like we talked about before. We do have our new phone system in. And once they got into the IT room, it was filled with old monitors, laptops, et cetera, that are uh, broken or useless. And so we were able to get everything put together into a surplus uh, format, and you should all have that in your packet. Um, and I'm just asking for the council to uh, pass resolution number 2020 dash 29, so these items can be taken off our books as inventory and destroyed.
So moved.
Aye.
Okay, moved by Stephen Harper, seconded by Matthew Lund to uh, accept resolution number 2020 dash 029, declaring a police department equipment surplus. Questions on the motion? Uh, hearing none. All in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Hearing none opposed, uh, that resolution 2020 dash 029 is passed. So now we'll go down to uh, oh, is there a question?
No, but I just was saying, thank you.
Okay. Uh, so now uh, we're down to uh, the lease by Vertical Bridge, uh, city property, and Lucy Temple will take us through that one.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Um, this, the last time we talked about this, uh, Vertical Bridge Wireless Communication Facility was hmm, the beginning of 2020. There was a late 2019 um rejection of the permits or denial of the permits by the planning commission. And then discussion of alternate locations. Since then, I, I included a timeline with your, with the staff report because, just to remind us all where we were and, and where we are now. Um, so we've been talking to them about the alternate location, which is down near the Oaks Avenue interchange and I-90. And um, we did receive the a permit package which includes a SEPA checklist and a floodplain permit, site design review variants, you know, combined package. But that's going to travel down a parallel path. The lease is kind of on its own. And um, and so now here we have a final lease. Now, the difference is, you know, it changes the location. Um, this is not a private parcel. Um, this is city property still. Um, if anybody goes looking for the piece of property, don't be confused with the privately-owned storage unit facilities or privately-owned parcel that has done some clearing and grading. Um, the property that we're speaking of has not been um, altered in any way. Uh, it also removes a required gate, but maintains city and emergency access to the remaining portion of the city-owned parcel. Uh, recall up on the extension of um, East Fifth Street that there were going to be gates on either end because that's a park and we didn't want it to be a, a drive-through um, street. This will not have a gate, but it will um, will remain access open. Um, but the whole, the fence will be around the actual facility, but not around the road. And then the base rate, lease rate remains the same as to all the other financial terms. Um, it's essentially the same lease, just with different legal descriptions and details that had to do with the specific site locations. Um, so the requested action would be to authorize the mayor to sign and execute the lease with Vertical Bridge to locate the wireless communication facility on city-owned property. Um, that's at the bottom of the staff report. What goes on to show is um, generally where the previous tower location was, where the proposed tower location is um, their graphic that they used for the lease agreement. Uh, and when, since I hadn't sent out the notice of application for any of the permits, I haven't supplied anyone with the very specific um, engineered drawings or plan sets for the location or the site, um, the site information, which I said, you know, is coming through a parallel path. So this is what I have for you. I'm happy to answer any questions to clarify any of the information um, of during your discussion.
Ken, go ahead.
Lucy. Yeah, you got my concern about the location uh, that I, I have no problem with the tower, but concern about someday getting an interchange there. Um, and I realize that uh, yeah, a- and your aunt, you, I got an email and, and uh, yeah, I, I understand what your answer is, and that's beside the point. I think there's still a good argument to make it happen someday. I just don't want this project to preclude it, and uh, if you could speak to that.
Uh, I would like to let everyone else know what uh, information was provided. I don't know if it was provided to all the council or only Ken. Um, the question that was received this morning was that this location of the proposed tower could prevent the Oaks Avenue interchange from being a completed um, full-access interchange on I-90. And the answer back um, has, you know, been reiterated to the city over the last four or five years from the DOT and FHWA. Um, since I-90 is a limited-access freeway, um, it is under the regulation of the Federal Highway Administration or FHWA, and they have very specific rules on spacing full-access interchanges. And the spacing um, between the Safeway or one half of the A, A, exit 84 and the eastern half exit 84 won't allow for a full interchange at either of those locations under their rules. So that was the answer that was provided back. I don't have any other information I can share to shed light on when we could get an interchange if their answer is continuously no.
Yeah, well, uh, we, we heard that, what, four or five years ago, and that's been the answer. I just uh, still think that that's an obvious solution to a lot of our traffic uh, problems here, and especially in the future. And I just don't want to, you know, to me, this is like putting an improvement in the middle of an existing interchange. And I, I, so if, if we can move it, then I'm all for it, but I don't, I don't want it in that lane. That's my concern.
Stephen, uh, you have, you're muted.
I, I certainly understand your concern, uh, Ken, but I would imagine that by the time we reach uh, that uh, point where the city wants to extend that, and we've done all the other commensurate prerequisites, um, we're gonna be looking at a point where technology will likely have changed to such a degree that instead of having big towers placed, you know, along the freeway, we're gonna have multiple cascading towers all around. That's the trend where things are going. And so uh, looking forward, I don't see it as a roadblock in development. I see not, at least trying to explore this idea. I see not, at least trying to explore this idea as a, as a possible stunt to our development in other areas. The Internet of Things and cellular connectivity is only becoming in more demand. And this will allow, right now, every weekend, over and every weekend, over and over, we are, we have a current problem right now with all this traffic that comes by using the current available bandwidth of the tower's extent. And so getting a tower, or at least working down this road to possibly get a tower to relieve the current problem, I think is important.
Yeah, well, okay. I have no problem with the tower. That's, that's what I was saying. No problem at all. I just don't want it in the middle of the road.
Any other questions on the proposal?
Lucy, did, did they provide us with, I remember on Funding Commission, they, when we heard this last year, they provided us with like a pretty image of the, like, actual picture, and they superimposed the tower and what it would look like in that spot. Did they provide us with one of those this time?
Well, they did last time during the permits, but not for the lease. So this is the, this is the lease portion. And so I would expect to see that in the permitting portion. But I have not yet reviewed their permit package for completeness. But you would, you know, hear, hear some of that during the public notification portion of the permitting process. The permits are not slated to come before the city council. There are type three application that would go to the Planning Commission for the variants, but it would go out for public comment and go on to the city's website and such. So I would be able to provide some of that information at a later date.
Gotcha.
You guys, Ruston has a comment. Both of you have had a chance to say something. Let Ruston say a little something.
I'm not necessarily opposed to a tower. I agree with Stephen, the way things are going. We will need more connectivity. I do worry about, that's your very first impression of Clealum getting off that exit is, you know, it's hard enough coming into the train tracks and whatnot there. Now where I'm walking into a fifty-foot tall steel structure as I enter, try to enter Clealum. And I was wondering if they have exercised every option to put this tower, there's nowhere, somewhere east of this location. That would be a little less intrusive as they, as people come into our town off the exit.
Yes, if I can just respond to that, we went through several locations. And ultimately, and our attorney is on the phone, I don't know if she wants to weigh in, but I do believe in layman's terms, not legally, is that the that Vertical Bridge, based on the laws that govern towers, they can pretty much decide where this goes if it's zoned appropriately. So if this location was denied, they could actually put it back up on the hill where we had a lot of community pushback. That's my understanding of it, having gone through this process with our expert team at Kenyon Deason. If Alex wants to weigh in, or if the mayor has additional information, you know, that's basically just the layman's terms, like I said.
Go ahead, Stephen.
And also, I would weigh in, according to my acute observation of the different meetings where there was a lot of community feedback, this seemed to be one of the less friction-pointed places because it was there by the freeway, because it wasn't by as much residential. And the nature of the tower, it's going to be painted and colored, et cetera, to blend in more. And so this seemed to be the least community friction point where it pleased the most amount of people, from my observation of the comments that were given publicly at the several meetings that I was part.
And I will add that, thank you so much, Stephen, that for Russ's benefit, that in the lease, we negotiated that it was a stealth tower, which in their terms means that it is color matched to the surrounding trees. We specifically gave them a color number that they need to use. So it's color matched as far as it can get. And then I would say that if you placed this on a flat piece of ground with nothing around it, which if you look to the west or the east, it's all flat, then it would stick out much, much more than if it's nestled next to a very tall freeway overpass with very mature trees all around it. And they have no plans to remove trees so that they can use it as additional camouflage.
Perfect, perfect. Thank you for that answer. Thank you.
Okay, let's go for it. I'd like him to move it twenty feet north, but we'll deal with it.
Is that a motion, Ken?
Yeah, I make a motion that we accept it just so they move it twenty feet north.
Is there a second for his motion?
At least ask about it, okay?
All right, now I think that the motion is to accept the Vertical Bridge ground lease. We'll see what else we can do. It was moved by Ken and seconded by Mickey. Is that clear to everybody?
I just want to be clear, the actual verbiage of the motion was to accept it with the amendment of a twenty-foot move, and it was seconded under those terms. Is that what we're voting on, or are you rescinding your motion and rewording it?
I'll rescind my motion and reword it to accept it as proposed and inquire if it is possible to move it twenty feet north. And if not, we'll take it where it is.
I would second that.
But I, but does Mickey have to rescind his second first, though, Stephen?
Probably.
I'll second it.
Okay, so he rescinded that. Now Stephen has seconded the initial motion. Is that clear now to everybody?
No, but yes, to be clear, we're authorizing the mayor to sign this, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
That's right.
Okay.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Are we all getting kind of rummy?
Okay, all right. It's been moved and seconded. By Ken and Stephen to accept the ground lease from Vertical Bridge. Questions on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor with aye? Hearing none opposed, the lease to Vertical Bridge has been approved. So now this one ought to be quick. The Quadco, what is that? UPWP, Railroad Street Planning Project? Mike, what's going on there?
Well, this came to us from HLA. And it has to do with the Railroad Street kind of pre-planning project that we got a grant from Quadco on to do some right-of-way studies. And it's listed in the staff report that Deb Lecombe from HLA put together. So, meeting with city leadership, meet with BNSF, purchase title reports and provide a property identification exhibit, and prepare the transportation improvement plan update to include right-of-way for a project in the local transportation plan. So Deb asked that this come to council to let everybody know kind of what process they're going through. And again, this is kind of like a scoping project. It's to identify what right-of-ways needed, to identify if that project is feasible as we're, you know, looking at it. So she included a map that generally shows the railroad street extension location behind Shoemaker coming out at Columbia Avenue. And she wanted to really make sure that the council and the mayor were, were okay with HLA moving forward with one of the next tasks, which is meeting discussions with BNSF on our behalf to find out if BNSF is okay with the project. So it's just, she wanted to just have me check the weather of the council. What's, what's the temperature in the room?
In other words, this is planning we need if we're going to be able to extend Railroad Avenue up to Columbia Street. And I don't, does anybody have any objection to us doing this work? What was that, Matthew?
I said, this is great. Do we need to make a motion? Because I'm happy to do that if we need to.
No, okay, I, I, yeah, it's, it's
What does Captain Picard say? Engage?
It's clear, Lucy.
I will report on all those fronts. Thank you very much.
Okay, wow, that one was the same. Okay, now we're down to, let's see, the twenty twenty-one, the Chamber of Commerce contract. Stephen, will you want to take, take take the lead on that, please?
Yes, my, my schedule has been very busy, and I want to publicly profusely apologize to Amy for not having talked to her previous to this. But it is something where the committee is going to need to continue to review and have some more discussions with the chamber before we can recommend it. We do expect that sometime in January, we will that we'll bring it before the council. And that's where we're at.
So you're asking that this be tabled at this time, Stephen?
Correct.
Is there a second for that motion? Okay, it's moved, seconded by Matthew Lund to table this contract until the next council meeting. Is that correct?
Correct.
All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Opposed. Okay, this will be taken for the next scheduled city Okay, now this is an interesting one. Rob, you want to take this, the application for taxi service? And we're going to be asking for some council volunteers, I believe. Rob, take it away.
Right, yes, you're right, Mayor and Council. This is interesting. So we, we've, we've received a request for a taxi cab service. I didn't even know that we had a taxi code, but in reviewing the code, it looks like we do. It was, it was established in nineteen forty-seven. That does sound a little old, but
It's not that old.
But whoever came up with this is, is, is pretty good because we reviewed, also in your packet, there's, Ellensburg has, has one that's a little bit newer. I think it's in the seventies. Other than the fees, like we have a five-dollar fee, maybe the city of Ellensburg might have it as a hundred-dollar fee. But other than the fees, they're pretty, they're pretty comparable. So after reading through the, the code, essentially what happens is that is that the council has, has to form a, a committee. And then what the committee does is then go through all the laws and makes, and approves this taxi cab service. Then but, but the council is basically leaving it up to this committee to approve or reject the, the actual taxi cab application. So, so, so it won't actually come back to council unless, unless the committee rejects the application, then the applicant has an opportunity to put their, say, in front of the council. But, but after this, it basically is a committee approval or rejection. And so really, there's a lot of paperwork in here for nice reading, I guess, but all I'm really asking for is the mayor to appoint a committee, which I believe should include, you know, Kathy and myself and, and the, and the chief.
Rob?
Yes.
Hang on a minute, Matthew's had his hand
Please.
Well, I just, I just don't see, why can't we just issue a license and let this applicant run their business? I don't see where the code requires a committee.
Hang on. Okay, so five dot twenty dot zero forty, all applications for taxi owner licenses shall be
Okay.
Yeah, and, but, but again, I don't want this to be a drawn-off, I, I agree with you, Ken. I don't, this doesn't mean to be a drawn-out thing. We need to just get the people together and approve it or whatever.
Okay, so, Middy.
Here, why don't we have a meeting right now? Point three of us will say yes, and we're, we're done with it.
Well, and I was actually going to propose that as well, only because, or at least note that that would need to be a noticed, open, public meeting, right? If they're making the decision on the council's behalf, that would need to be a noticed, public meeting.
I don't think so. I think decision. It's similar to our, our events committee. We have one council member on there, but we make all of the determinations, and then that committee member comes back and just says what they did. I don't know if it's
It actually says it's referred to the city council. And then it says by a committee and for its approval. So the approval or rejection is referred. You know, the approved or rejected license, it would, I mean, to me, it'd be clear, the committee needs to go over it and then send a referral to the council. Yeah. All right, so We don't have a license, we don't have an application right now in front of us, but I can see other than a blank one.
Can I ask a second question?
We can't even consider it tonight.
All right, go ahead, Matthew, have a second.
Two other taxi services that I know of that operate in the county, rodeo taxi and KCC, I think is the other one. Do they have permits from the city of Clealum? I've seen them around, so I assume they operate here.
No, they don't have anything from the city of Clealum. I don't know if they operate in, inside the city limits.
Are they picking up people within the city or dropping them off from elsewhere?
I don't know the answer to that question. I'm just, I'm just curious if
I, I don't, I don't know if they are or not, but they have, they don't have a license. And the limo service that is in town is a little different. That's a different code. It's just the taxi is different.
Okay, so how about this, you guys? Who has the next committee meeting, right? Is it utilities or is it?
Lodging taxes probably have one soon, right?
You guys in the lodging tax, take ten minutes, look this over and make a recommendation, okay? You're going to be together.
Love it.
Take care of.
All right.
All right, thank you for that. There. Okay. All right, now next, the, okay, the county EMS inter-local agreement by Rob. And this, we, this, we go through this every year, and this is brought to us by Cheryl Burrows, the EMS coordinator.
Right, that's what I was going to say. So that's what I just said. How about that? It's something we do every year. But we just need the mayor to sign it with council approval.
Is this a change? Does this know like increase or anything? It's just kind of perfunctory?
They, it is, let's see now, we, they, what, what, this actually goes to COG first. And it is presented to the, and then I believe interlocal agreement, I think we pay for four percent of their, of their operating cost.
Yeah, it might be up a little bit, but not substantial.
Not a lot.
Right.
Yes.
I move, therefore, that we authorize the mayor to sign the interlocal cooperation agreement with Kitas County EMS Division.
Moved by John Galando, seconded by Mickey Holtz to authorize the mayor to sign the Kitas County interlocal agreement. Questions on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor with aye?
Aye.
Opposed, those opposed. Hearing none, the Kitas County interlocal agreement will be signed. Now we're down to Legislative Procedure Committee, and Beth, you're going to give us an update?
You're on mute.
You're muted.
Okay, let's try again. Just a quick one, just an update on where we're at. We're looking at what kind of parliamentary procedure we are considering for the council. Mostly an abbreviated parliamentary procedure.
Um, mostly an abbreviated parliamentary procedure, um, where you don't want to get bogged down by too much, too many rules. Um, so we've, we are looking at Robert's Rules of Order and other more modern procedures that are available to us. Um, we're looking at also ways to streamline the council meetings. Um, there has been, according to, with Gary giving us some advice, the city, the county puts a lot of things into the, oh, shoot, me. Yeah, just, the consent agenda that we do not. So a lot of our resolutions that we went through today could also be presented one meeting and then put in the consent agenda for the following meeting and agreed all at once instead of going through each one at a time. Which really is very appealing, so we're looking at, um, that also. And then we're also looking at other, other things that we do, um, whether they do need to be changed or not, how the layout of the committees. We realize the mayor is the one that assigns them. Do we need to eliminate some of our committees? Do we need to change the members, things like that? Um, anyway, so that's kind of where we're at so far. And a lot of research to be done.
Yes, all right, I appreciate that.
Did I miss anything, Matthew?
Nope, that was good.
Okay.
Okay, um, we're down to number 12, I don't know, it looks like we could probably talk about this for a while. Stephen, yeah?
Yeah. Uh, just that, uh, from the cemetery committee, we've had, we've had a meeting, we've had some movement. We do expect, uh, some line items on the next, um, uh, council, uh, agenda.
All right, thank you, Stephen. I, I forgot to ask if there was other, of course, uh, John Glondo's waving his hand.
Move to adjourn.
Really?
I'll second it.
Second.
It's been seconded by, uh, Ruston. All right, it's a lot. This ain't nothing though, we used to have clock meetings all the time.
All the time.
All the.
But we started at seven.
All, seven to 11, yes, now we're going to six to nine, there you go. All righty.
Okay. Bye bye, guys.
Thank you all.
See you next Wednesday, right? Next Wednesday.